Having the point of time five to arrive, but I'd like to call to order that on Monday, December 30th, 2019, the committee of the whole to order, please follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we end of the business of the committee of the whole, I'd like to have everyone to pause and join me in a moment of silence to member Mary Agnes Midge Langfelder, wife of former Mayor Ozzy Langfelder, and mother of current Mayor Jim Lynn. Thank you very much. All right, just a quick, please call the roll.
Will do.
Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderwoman Turner.
Here.
Alderman Fulginzi.
Here.
Alderman Proctor.
Here.
Alderwoman DeSenzio.
Present.
Alderman McMenamin. Alderwoman Conley.
[coughs]
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, I mean, Mr. Chairman, a quorum is present.
Okay, let's accept a motion of approval, the December 10th, 2019, meeting minutes.
So moved to him, second.
All favor?
Aye.
Post motion carries. The treacherous report, or the contract report, any presentation?
No.
All right, next we have ordinances table or make committee, Mr. Clerk, would you please read those?
2017, 103, 2018, 110, 2019, 008, 2019, 276, 2019, 430.
Anybody would like those pulled out for consideration?
See none, last chance, all right, moving on, Mr. Clerk, please read.
CWLP, 2019, 518, an ordinance authorizing additional funding in an amount not to exceed $650,000 under contract number UE 17-01-80, generating facility scaffolding with Apache Industrial United Incorporated, for a total amount not to exceed $5,150,000 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move to debate.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah.
Alderman Hanauer?
Yeah, Doug, real quick, just, I just kind of briefly spoke to you, I'm concerned about, it says here about the spring outage, I would really like to see us try to get this done while it's out, we got an outage now, so that we don't have people, you know, doing other things.
And I just confirmed that with Scott Rogers, so there is no plan to do a spring outage.
Okay.
So the money that they need for scaffolding is coming really from the continued work for 33 going forward.
Okay.
Until it's back online.
All right, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Could I, I'd like to withdraw the debate and put it on consent then?
Sure.
Second.
All right, motion to place it on consent, any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries for consent.
2019, 519, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing contract UE 20-10-57, wound water leachit analysis with Tech Lab Incorporated, in an amount not to exceed $71,362 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Consent.
Second.
Any discussion? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries for consent.
2019, 520, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing contract UE 20-11-64, mini skid steer with Vermeer Sales and Services of Central Illinois Incorporated, in an amount not to exceed $51,740 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Consent.
Second.
Any discussion? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries for consent.
2019, 521, an ordinance approving payment in the amount of $50,000 to Sangamon County Soil and Water Conservation District, for Lake Springfield Maintenance and Restoration Program in the Lake Springfield watershed for the fiscal year 2020 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Is there a motion?
Move to consent. Second.
Motion for consent, second, any discussion? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Present.
And one present.
Noted. 2019, 522, an ordinance approving payment to Advanced Utilities Systems Corporation, a division of N Harris Computer Corporation, in an amount not to exceed $713,556 for annual software support and maintenance for a three-year term, for the Infinity Customer Information System, CIS, for the Office of Public Utilities.
Is there a motion?
Move to consent. Second.
Any discussion? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries for consent.
2019, 523, an ordinance approving a Fourth Amendment to Statement of Work Number One with CGI Technologies and Solutions Incorporated, for ERP and Maximo upgrades for the Office of Public Utilities.
Consent.
Second.
All right, any discussion? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries for consent.
2019, 524, a resolution rescinding Michelle Nicole's signatory authority as awarded under the Resolution Number 019-18, and delegating signatory authority to Dan Brill, Supervisor of the Department of Land and Water Resources, and Mike Romer, Utility Property Manager for the City of Springfield Office of Public Utilities, as it pertains to annual state and federal cost share program, participation by the City of Springfield Farm Lease Tenants for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move to consent.
Second.
Any discussion? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries for consent.
2019, 534, an ordinance amending Chapter 50 of the 1988 Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended regarding net metering for the Office of Public Utilities as amended.
Move to consent.
Second. Move to consent.
There is an amendment, it's just a technical, one strike on a definition.
Mr. clerk, could I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Could I be added as a co-sponsor to this, please?
Yes.
Did it, Mr. clerk?
10, 9, and 5.
Alderman Donlin?
After we're done explaining the amendment, I'd like to speak to the ordinance as amended.
Just very briefly, and Doug may want to address this, but he had pointed out that the, we had included a definition that's really not necessary under our current code provisions, so the effect of the amendment is simply to strike one definition as it relates to, we were adding definitions and this is striking one that's not necessary. The rest of the ordinance remains intact.
Yeah, I just felt that it was conflicting and I asked Corporation Counsel to delete that definition.
And which, what was the definition?
It was the net metering service eligible onsite generating facility. It said a renewable energy generator of 25 KW AC reviewed and approved by CLP, so to me, I thought it constricted it only to that size, which certainly is the intent of the ordinance, of the code.
In other words, it's this, the ability to address this is affected by other parts of the code.
Yeah.
In other words, just, okay.
Yes, okay.
Alderman Donlin, were you wanted to be added as sponsor?
Yes.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion for the amendment?
Yes, move to accept the amendment.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Any discussion? All right, passed, Alderman Donlin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, to the ordinance as amended, I just want to, first of all, I want to thank the primary sponsor, Alderwoman DeSenzio, and Alderman Conley, and Michelle Knox, and the utility, and Alderman Hanauer, and all those are involved in discussions. Thanks for your willingness to sit down and talk this through and make sure that we have a feel for what this is trying to accomplish. I think this is going to be good for the city, good for those who desire to have solar in the community, for, as a renewable, and I urge your support of the ordinance. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Public Safety, 2019, 532, an ordinance authorizing the acceptance of RFP Number HR 20-22 for a two-year contract with Resource Management Associates, in an amount not to exceed $200,000 for the police lateral and police and fire department promotional testing, from January 1st, 2020, through December 31st, 2021, for the Office of Human Resources.
Move to consent.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Well, we've had Alderman Redpath.
Corporation Counsel, what does the term police lateral mean? Is that transferring?
That is a circumstance where on occasion SPD has received applications from police officers, already trained and so on, from other departments, so that's a lateral hire.
So what's the expense?
This 200,000, it's my understanding, is related to the testing, this is for overall testing for police and basically the annual testing. It's not so much for just the lateral hires, it's for the promotional exams and so on.
But the lateral hires should be certified officers before they come here.
That is correct, and that only happens if the chief were here, I think, that only happens very occasionally, we, I think, maybe get one or two officers a year, something like that.
Thank you.
But this primarily is to fund the promotional testing.
Any other questions?
Is this an annual contract?
Yes, every, this is a two-year contract, but yes, it's a repeat of prior contracts.
All right, any other questions? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries for consent.
Public Works, 2019, 529, an ordinance authorizing purchase of real property located at Hilltop Road from Toad Hall Farms LLC, for an amount not to exceed $16,500 for the Hilltop Road multi-use trail projects.
Is there a motion?
Motion for consent.
Second.
Alderman Redpath?
That's fine. Okay, we have a motion for consent, second. Any discussion? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
2019, 530, an ordinance regarding the variance request of Section 153.158B2 pertaining to access to public streets at the redivision of Lot 2B-4AL of the redivision of Lot 2B-4A of the redivision of Lot 2B-4, of the redivision of Lot 2B, of the redivision of Lot 2 of White Oaks West, for the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent.
Is there a second? Okay, Alderman Donlin?
Mr. Clerk, could you please reread that?
[laughing]
Just kidding.
Just a little slurred.
Yeah, all right, any discussion? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
2019, 531, an ordinance approving the location of sketch map of redivision of Lot 2B-4AL of the redivision of Lot 2B-4A of the redivision of Lot 2B-4, of the redivision of Lot 2B, of the redivision of Lot 2 of White Oaks West, for the Office of Public Works.
Consent.
Any discussion? See none, all, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
General City Business, 2019, 525, an ordinance to increase the number of Class A liquor licenses by one, for Fun Time Gaming LLC, doing business as Pops Lounge, located at 723 North Grand Avenue East.
Move to consent.
Second.
All right, any discussion?
I have a question.
Sure, Alderwoman Turner?
Is this like one of those Miss Kimmy's? Is this like one of those Miss Kimmy's establishments?
Pop Lounge.
I mean, I'm asking, I'm asking because it says Fun Time Gaming, which would lead me to believe that there's.
One for fun times, not two.
That there's gaming, I mean, where is, I mean, whose word is it in? Does nobody, no one knows anything about this?
I think it's mine, but [laughing]. That's why I couldn't do the motion, everything's in the chair.
My goodness, you people are looking at me like I'm from Mars or something.
Yeah, it would still, wouldn't that fall under the new rules, so?
Yeah.
So if it is, they better be able to sell a lot of food and.
That's, I'm just trying to understand what's going on.
We'll get more information for it next week.
Do you want us to hold it?
I think I know who they called.
Should we put it on debate then?
Can we?
Yeah. Yeah, I withdraw my motion for consent, put on debate, please.
All right, any discussion about that, and all in favor on debate?
Aye.
Aye.
President.
All right, do we have enough? 102, 34, yeah.
2019, 526, an ordinance amending Chapter 131 of the 1988 City of Springfield Code Of Ordinances as amended by amending Section 131.07 prohibiting use of cannabis and adding Section 131.07 prohibiting the use of cannabis and adding Section 131.14 limiting the possession and use of cannabis.
Motion for debate.
Second. Second.
I got a motion for debate and a second, and an amendment?
I have an amendment, I do have an amendment, so, motion to accept amendment number one.
Second.
Any discussion on the amendment?
It's pretty basic, included in the ordinance, there's a reference to the Marijuana Leaf Identification Fund, and so the amendment just establishes the Marijuana Leaf Identification Fund, and delineates the purposes for which funds can be expended from that fund.
Any questions on that? All right, we've got a vote on the amendment, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, amendment approved, and then any discussion on the ordinance as amended? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
2019, 527, an ordinance amending Chapter 170, adding Section 170.17.23 of the 1988 City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended prohibiting intermodal or commercial shipping containers from being placed on residential property.
Move for consent.
Second.
All right, motion for consent, a second, any questions, discussion? I got one question, so a new kind of, if you watch HGTV, there's like container homes, there's like kind of a new thing, you can build houses out of containers and stuff, would this stop that?
That would be a house.
Yeah, but it says shipping containers, though, would that stop being able to do something like that?
I think, I don't want to speak for Alderman Donlin, but I have this, if I could be added as a co-sponsor, that would be great.
Please, thank you.
I think the intent is for those shipping containers that people put out.
Like the pods?
That they're supposed to.
Not like pods.
Not the pods.
Because those are temporary.
Go ahead.
Yeah, that are supposed to be, that are supposed to be temporary, and they just leave them there forever in four days.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, the intent, as Alderwoman Turner described, is, both of our wards have experienced the same problem, where we have individuals that are leasing, renting, buying these shipping containers, and I'm talking large containers, as the definition describes, that basically are like semi-type containers that are used, you see them on rail cars, you see them on the back of semis, and you see them unfortunately in people's front backyards, and we've had some issues having them move around the property, and we found that the code, the way it was written now, did not prohibit these containers from being put in backyards, and obviously that's not good for anybody if that occurs. Now, I'm glad somebody asked the question about the storage pods, the intent is not to apply to, you see these, they actually say pods, you see them all over the city, like when someone's remodeling, has a fire or what have you, they'll put these storage pods in their driveways, and, you know, of course pursuant to our code, and just a, really a question, a follow-up question of Corporation Counsel, this would not apply to those, would it, Jim?
That is correct, this is limited to those intermodal or commercial shipping containers, so those would be something that would be used in that context, so it would not apply to a temporary, the pods, or those type of things.
Thank you.
And just to mention what Alderman Donlin, what you were saying earlier, the code actually had no provisions for it, which is what this addresses.
Thank you, thanks for putting this together. Alderman Gregory?
Yes, I also have a, I have one of these, but it's not on a residential property, it is on a, I guess we would call it a retail, off of Pope and South Grand, where they're storing, how does that affect situations like that?
This relates only to residential.
Only to residential, okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Alderman Redpath?
I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor, please.
Co-sponsor, I think.
What's the difference between the pods and the intermodal carriers, is it the size, or?
I think the.
By the word pod on it.
Alderman Donlin?
I'll give you my, I'll give you my layperson interpretation, and I'm sure Mr. Circle will give you the legal interpretation, but essentially, this is meant to attack the containers that are, that are used in shipping, unfortunately.
I understand that, but is there a definition that's a difference in them? I mean, you could probably ship anything in a pod also.
You can't, the pods are temporary, they're going to go at some point.
Well, this, this has language that, I'll just read it, it says built for intermodal freight transportation, meaning these containers can be used across different modes of transportation, from ship to rail to trucks, without unloading or reloading their cargo, and obviously, a storage pod would not, that would not apply, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Counselor?
That definition came actually from federal rules, there are certain rules that the federal government has adopted regarding intermodal shipping containers, and that's where that definition came from.
Thank you. Any other questions? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
2019, 528, an ordinance authorizing payment in an amount of $33,997.52 to Beau Friday, a Springfield Fire Department employee, for settlement of a workers' compensation claim for case number 18-WC-04257.
Move to consent.
Second.
All right, any discussion? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries for consent.
2019, 533, an ordinance amending Chapter 131 of the 1988 City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended by amending Section 131.08 pertaining to the possession of drug paraphernalia.
Move to consent, second.
Motion for consent, a second, any discussion? See Alderman, or Alderwoman DeSenzio?
So just to be clear, this is to legalize what has been sold for decades in Springfield head shops, Penny Lane, Traveling Treasures, whatever's out there anymore, I'm old, I don't remember, but it's to legalize the paraphernalia that is used to smoke marijuana in these head shops, that used to be outlawed, but you could still go buy it any day of the week, and twice on Sunday. I didn't know that's what you did on Sunday. That's what I do on Sunday, cool.
Alderman Redpath?
Corporation Counsel, is this not covered underneath the state's statute about drug paraphernalia, it's not?
That is correct, this amendment actually is trying to, it's effectively bringing the city code to be consistent with state law, and so this is striking any reference to paraphernalia that's used in the, in relation to cannabis, but keeps any paraphernalia in relation to other, to a controlled substance, and that's what the state law requires, so this is to try to make the city code consistent with the new law.
Alderwoman Conley?
Corporation Counsel, this was, this is the cleanup amendment that you'd mentioned a couple of weeks ago, that we needed to get done, so.
This and the other one preceding, where that, that other changes to the code relating to possession and use, is simply to bring the city code into compliance or make it consistent with state law, that, this is the other piece of that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Alderman Hanauer, did you have a question, I think I skipped over you, nope, you're good, okay, all right, any other discussion? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And that wraps up our business of ordinances, right?
Yep.
All right, any unfinished business? Alderwoman Turner?
I have two questions for, one of them is for Director McCarty, who's looking like he's ready to go.
I'm ready to answer your question.
So, so we're getting ready to move into this new era of legalized recreational cannabis, and there are, I'm not talking about the sales tax money, I'm talking about the money that will be coming to the city, that will be split between the police and fire pension and the economic development on the east side. When that money comes in, where will it be deposited, and how will we track it?
That actually is a form of sales tax, it's a local municipal, it's called a municipal retailer's occupation tax, it's essentially a locally imposed sales tax, it will come to us the same way that the other funds do, through the Department of Revenue, we will deposit that in corporate, but they will have their own revenue lines, so that we know how much comes in. In terms of money going out, as we expend that money on pensions or in east side development, we can attach a program code to that, so that we can query the system and find out exactly how much money's coming in, and how much money is going out, so that it can be accounted for.
Okay, so can we, can we set that up now, so that we'll be ready when the money starts to come in, so that, so that, what I would, what I would like to see is a separate, a separate, I know it comes in all into one fund, but a separate code for the money that's related to the police and fire pension, and the monies that are related to the, to the east side economic development portion, so that we will know exactly what's going out in each area, we'll be able, we'll be able to track it, so if we could set that up now, that would be great.
Sure, we will go ahead and do that, the, that particular tax doesn't kick in until July 1st, but we'll go ahead and set up the parameters of that, and I'll get that information to Tim and to you, so that you can see exactly how we're going to do it, but there will be separate codes accounting for all of that, and we can even run monthly reports if you would like.
That was, you read my mind, oh wow.
I knew it was coming.
Karnack. Okay, and then, I have one other question, so, any expenditure that comes out of, not the police and fire, because we know that just automatically goes, but the other, that would need to come, come back for council approval, correct?
Well, it depends on the size of expenditure, it wouldn't change per se, under the council rules, so if it's, say, $10,000 or something, it wouldn't necessarily have to come to council approval that I'm aware of, unless there's something that I am not aware of, it would follow the same rules as any other expenditure, it would be budgeted, it would have to be budgeted, and the council would have to make sure that we had the approval for that, but other than that, no, unless you set it up that way.
Please, could we, because that's a concern, because I know everybody who's sitting here right now, and I love and trust all of you, but we don't know what the council's going to look like in four years, and I just want to make sure, and I know I will not be sitting here, and I just want to make sure that the intent of that funding continues after I'm no longer in this seat, so if we could set it up so that it needs council approval for any expenditure that comes out of there, that would be great.
Certainly, we can do an ordinance set up that way, and the other thing that I can do is, we'll set up a separate activity within the budget, so that you can see the actual approach for that, those particular funds.
That's absolutely wonderful, now my next question is, I'm, I'm a bit concerned, because I know that this, you know, in a couple of days, we're going to be moving into this new era, and not everybody, we're not moving all in that, into this era together, people have different ideas about how things should go, so I'm still a bit concerned about how all of this is going to play out with regard to local law enforcement, and this is not, nobody start throwing darts at me, I'm not making any, casting any aspersions on any of our fine sworn officers, however, I would like to set, to have a, and I don't know if we need to, how we need to set this up, so I don't know, Corporation Counsel and Mayor Langfelder, if you could give me some guidance on this, but I would like to have a quarterly report of all traffic stops and civilian contact with law enforcement related to cannabis, that would basically give us a who, what, when, where, and a disposition, and, and again, you know, this is, it's going to be a while before this becomes, everybody becomes comfortable, so if we could set that up so that it carries on after I'm no longer sitting in this seat, that would be great as well, so I don't know if we need to do an ordinance, or how, how does that work?
Could that be a regular police report?
They should be able to, the chief is not here, but I would think they should be able to generate statistics on stops and so on, I mean, they have the ability to generate reports based on dates and types of incidents, so I think we can get that pretty easily.
Right, but, I mean, how, how would we set it up so that we don't, we don't have to ask for it every quarter, it would be a. It would be a, a quarterly report that would come to the council on a regular basis from now until forever.
We could do some kind of a change to city code, you know, regarding a specific report if it's limited to cannabis, it could just simply be a report required by SPD.
Okay, that would be great. Can we, can we do that, please? Thank you.
Corbin Gregory?
Madam Doris, I would love to be added as a co-sponsor.
That's fine.
That's okay. Thank you.
Any other unfinished business? Ms. Mayor?
Just a reminder that tomorrow night is first night, activities at Springfield High School from one to four, and then at Springfield High School, the Hoagland Center for the Arts and Lincoln Visitor, Home Visitor Center from four to eleven forty-five, so individuals interested can get their tickets through the Springfield Area Arts Council's website or Hoagland Center for the Arts.
Alderman Haner?
Yeah, we're supposed to get the budget books today, McCarty. We've got meetings next week.
End of week.
Can we get the, can we get, can that be sent to us electronically, so I can?
End of week, we're good. Books and electronically, sorry for the delay.
All of them, Turner?
Can someone send us the, I should say, resend us the meeting dates and times?
It's in your mailbox.
Oh, okay, thank you. Thank you.
Any other unfinished business? New business? Nope, seeing none. Any citizens requesting to address the committee? Do we have anyone to sign up?
Leonard Joyner.
Leonard.
I guess you were.
I don't see Leonard here. Okay, so.
I think there's someone in the back there.
Okay, yeah, come on up.
Over here.
Good evening, gentlemen. I just had a quick question for the ordinance about fun time gaming. I'm the owner.
Oh, okay.
I want to answer any questions that you're concerned that you might have.
No, I really, I didn't have any concerns, I was just trying to figure out if it was a, what type of establishment is it? I mean, is it, is it like, is it a bar, restaurant? Is it just for gaming, or?
What I'm planning on right now, I'm going to have food in there, so it'd be a lounge type spot, but they got, have order food, also with the liquor license. I do plan on putting games in the, in the establishment, but that'll come at a later time.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
No problem.
You state your name, though, for the record, so we have it.
Ian Lundey.
Great, thanks.
Yes.
So, is this the same type of establishment that we spoke on, that you was trying to do in South Town?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I have a question. As far as the topic being put off until next week, what is the, you know, what's the common?
Well, actually.
Want to move it to consent?
Yeah, actually, we can move it to consent.
Yeah.
Move it, we can move it to consent, and then that way, it'll, it'll just be done next week.
Second. All right, we have a motion on consent in a second, what was the ordinance?
Five twenty-five.
Five twenty-five?
Five twenty-five.
Two thousand nineteen, five twenty-five. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries for consent, and one present, so we're back on consent for you, you're all good.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming up.
Yeah, thanks for coming up and explaining.
All right, did we have one more citizen?
Well, actually, Leonard Joyner, but it doesn't appear like they're there.
Okay, anybody else? Seeing none, executive session?
No, sir.
All right, so motion for adjournment?
Come on up.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, yes.
Mayor, you doing okay?
I know, and. A lot of people. And. I. I don't like hearing that word, because I don't like those. I think. I don't understand. I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. I don't know.